So I will chair, I will chair temporarily. And when he is able to make it in, I'll pass the gavel to him. So getting the meeting started, let's go into room number two, city monthly reports. And the first up is a Honolulu Fire Department.
Hey Dave, aren't you gonna do a roll call?
Um, I was only going to do a roll call after we got to appointing the agenda where we had um voting, voting on him. But uh, sure, um, since member Watson brought it up, let's do a roll call to determine quorum.
Oh, hi, uh, my name is Hanson, I'll be your uh new neighborhood assistant. Um, hi. Okay, uh, whoever's here is a hello, or say present. Um, Ellen Watson.
Present.
Uh, Whitney Basel.
Hello.
Dave Nagadi. Elton Fukamoto.
Here, here.
Clyde Lumen. Clyde Lumen. Phil Lee. Phil Lee. Joanne Coff.
Present.
Diane Chung.
Present.
Pat T, that TT Koano.
Present.
And Robert Fox. Robert Fox. Yeah, you can mark them down.
Our vote is here, but um, he's, his audio is not working. Also, Robert Zane just signed on, so I'm passing the gavel to him.
Okay.
Thank you, uh, can you hear me?
Oh, oh, hi, yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, good, apologies for the late attendance.
We have uh nine, so we make quorum.
Perfect. Thank you very much, sorry, having, having some technical issues on my side. So uh, first off, um, thank you Vice Chair Dave for calling us to order. We'll move on next to the city monthly reports. First off with the Honolulu Fire Department, is anybody from the Honolulu Fire Department in attendance?
Uh, yes, uh, I am uh Acting Captain uh Erica Fernandez with the Manoa Fire Station.
Do you, do you want four fires on our board?
Um, so for the month of December twenty twenty-three, um, there were zero structured fires. Um, there was one nuisance fire, one activated alarm, oh, I'm sorry, nine activated alarms. Um, there were sixty-two medical emergencies, three motor vehicle crashing collisions, one mountain rescue. Um, and this month's fire safety tip and announcement is regarding lithium ion batteries. So lithium ion batteries supply, supply power to many kinds of devices, including smartphones, laptops, e-scooters, e-bikes, e-cigarettes, smoke alarm toys, and even cars. If not used correctly or damaged, these batteries can catch fire or explode. So to make note, they can always follow manufacturer's instructions and use the battery and charging cord that's only designed for the device. Um, charge devices in a cool area with good ventilation and do not keep the charging device or device battery after it's fully charged, or don't, do not keep charging them after they're fully charged. Uh, e-scooters and e-bikes should only be charged outdoors. Smaller devices should be placed on hard, non-flammable surfaces when charging and never under your pillow, on your bed, or on your couch. And to store batteries away from anything that could catch fire. Um, that's all I have from the department, do I have any questions?
Members of the board, any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Hearing and seeing none, anybody from the community have any questions for the Honolulu Fire Department? Hearing and seeing none, thank you very much for your time.
Chair, uh, Member Lumen has hand raised.
Oh, thank you for catching me that, for some reason, I'm not seeing any video feeds. So um, Dave, if you can point, if anybody showing video feeds that have their hands raised, please do so, um. Go ahead, Member Lumen.
Okay, uh, I have a question about a couple of nights ago, there were like five or six, seven fire trucks that came up Manoa, uh, East Manoa Road. And people were asking me if I knew anything about that. It was after that shootout down uh near University.
Oh, um, yes, I believe that was two nights ago is what you're regarding.
Yeah.
Um, so I can tell you right now that there was a fire um on uh Peady Road.
Which road?
Uh, Peady.
Peady, okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh, any more questions?
Can you say anything about it, was it, was anybody injured, was the house totaled or what happened?
Uh, so right now, um, I, I'm sure that what will happen is that our Community Relations Office will give us more information as far as what to release. Um, and we'll provide you with much more information in the next month, uh, in the next month. But for right now, uh, as far as I know, nobody was injured, but um, but yeah, that's.
Okay, thank you, that's.
Yeah, of course, of course. No, uh, understandable concern, for sure.
Robert?
Robert? Yes?
Yeah, can I help the uh Fire Off, Fire Department Officer?
Uh, go ahead, council member.
Okay, this is the uh response that I got from HFD. On January first of twenty twenty-four, the HFD received a nine-one-one call at eight thirty-one PM for a building fire near thirty-three thirty-one Peady Drive in Manoa and responded with ten units staffed with thirty-five personnel. The first unit arrived on the scene at eight thirty-eight PM to find smoke and flames emanating from a three-story residential building. Firefighters secured the water supply and initiated an aggressive fire attack with end lines to bring the fire under control at eight fifty PM. All searches for occupants confirmed that there was no one, no one in the building during the incident. Overhaul techniques were performed to look for hidden fire and void of spaces of the building in which the fire started and to ensure the fire did not extend into the neighboring homes. The fire was extinguished at nine twenty-seven PM. All HFD personnel were accounted for with no reports of injuries. The HFD Fire Investigator was requested to determine the origin and cause of the fire as well as to provide damage estimates. An update will be sent out once the final investigation report is completed. So thank you very much with the Manoa Fire Station. So this is the report that I got.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, any more questions? Uh, Dave, if you see any hands raised on the video feed, please let me know. Hearing and seeing none, thank you again, uh Honolulu Fire Department for coming in and for updating us.
Okay, no problem.
Next up, we have the Honolulu Police Department.
Yes, present, yes, present, Lieutenant Miura.
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, Lieutenant Miura from the uh Honolulu Police Department, District Seven. Happy New Year, everybody, uh, provide the stats. So motor vehicle thefts, we had sixteen burglaries, one thefts, we had five unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, we had six. Total cost for service, uh, six thousand three hundred fifty-five. So for the tips that we have, we're gonna use uh home security tips. So number one, don't tempt a thief. Store lawnmowers, motorcycles, mopeds, bicycles, surfboards, or any valuables out of sight. Trim your shrubbery around your home to reduce cover for burglars. Louder windows are intended for ventilation, not security. The most common way burglars make entry into homes in Hawaii is the removal of louvers. Blue glass louvers or purchase locking clips to increase security. And finally, be a good neighbor. If you notice anything suspicious in your neighborhood, please call nine-one-one immediately. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, um, so we're gonna press open up to the board for questions. And um, first off, I'd like to ask if you have any um comments from the uh Honolulu Police Department regarding the incident that took place on New Year's Day at uh, at Manoa by University?
Um, I mean, no comment um outside from what was already released in the media.
Okay, cuz I know, I think there were a couple of uh community concerns about um questions about, I guess, the Honolulu Police Department's um communications with the community while the search, while the um pursuit was ongoing.
Uh, sure, understood, um, I will voice um all concerns regarding that matter forward. Um, I'm, I'm pretty sure, well, I know of other uh, I guess avenues that have been expressed the same concerns, so it's um and I know the uh, the chiefs and everything, they have the administration, they, they're aware of it. Uh, I can't personally answer for them, uh, whatever information they provided or whatever, um I guess remarks they had that would be the same, uh, but again, I can, I will voice the concerns from this uh, this board as well.
Uh, thank you Lieutenant Miura, and also our thoughts and prayers are with the officers who were shot during the incident. So uh, please pass along our, our hopes that they have a smooth recovery as well.
Yes, appreciate it, thank you very much for that.
Uh, Member Fox. Robert, are you there? Still can't hear Robert.
You hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Fine, two days ago, someone broke into the house, which is abandoned next to mine, at twenty-three fifteen mile away. Um, they had taken a power drill and unscrewed the plywood from the windows of the house in the back where you couldn't see the street. Um, it's my neighbor, Jerry Ann Lee owns that house, and so I went over and I secured the house for her. Um, this is the third time that this house has been burglarized. Um, the police were called. And I was worried that somebody was still in the house, but that seems not to have been the case. Thank you very much for your assistance, you showed up in great time, I really appreciate that. Um, the prior to invasions of this property were done by a guy we all know, his name is Ivan, who walks up the street on University Avenue screaming and yelling. Uh, he's quite violent, um, he's threatened a lot of people, he's broken car windows. And now it's gotten to a different level where he's breaking into property. Um, I do wanna bring that to the Police Department's attention because escalation of violence is something you need to know about. And I pray that the Police Department will take this under consideration as you approach Ivan in the future because he's still there sleeping in Manoa Park.
Robert, I have to jump in for time just because we have some big stuff coming down on the agenda, sorry.
Hold it, thank you, thank you.
Um, Diane?
Um, I just wanted you to know that I came to University Avenue, we were blocked off because I, I, during and no one told us where we could go, but they tried to go down the university, I tried to go on door. And I finally ended up on King Street, but no one told us why, what was happening. So, I mean, I would have just avoided that area. And when I was coming back from the party, I got, uh, I was bored, I got off the freeway and I was headed towards University Parking Lot, no one told me what to do. And then finally, I made a U and got onto Doe Street. And then I went, well, I'm right back where I started from. I, if I didn't know how to go through University of Hawaii campus, I wouldn't know how to get back into Manoa. They should have at least told us, direct us to figure out how to get back into Manoa instead of just blocking us off and wondering where do we go from here. Um, that was, you know, this was so many hours later, it was like nine o'clock, and yet, no one was helping us direct where to go. To Manoa again, thank you.
Um, I'm sorry about this, uh, I have to handle something over here, Dave, can you take over the, me for the ability, please?
Robert, I'll pass the, the gavel when you will return.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, the hand I see is from Member Clyde Lumen, so Member Lumen, please go ahead.
Uh, my, my question is, I'm sorry, I was a little late for the meeting, but my question is, what's the condition of the two officers that were shot? Oh, can't hear me.
Uh, thank you, as far as they're stable, that's my understanding, all right now, uh, they will have some I guess, oh, how to put it, well, they're still in the hospital, uh, there's still gonna be some, some things they need to work through. Um, I don't have the, uh, the most up-to-date information, I know they're all stable and they're still in the hospital. Uh, so, I mean, that's, that's pretty much all the information I have for you right now, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for asking for that, bud.
Thank you, Member Lumen, and thank you Lieutenant, um, do we have any other members of the board who have questions or comments? All right, seeing and hearing none, do we have any uh community members who have questions or comments for the uh Police Department? All right, uh, hearing and seeing none, thank you for uh coming in to give your report to us, and we will now move on to the next agenda item. And that is the Board of Water Supply with Dominic Diaz.
Hi, good evening, uh, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, uh, happy new year. Uh, looking back at December, there was one main break in Manoa Valley, so there was a on December seventh, there was an eight-inch main in on Pinauula Street. Uh, that break was repaired. Uh, uh, just a quick general announcement, as we enter the new year, the Board of Water just wants to remind everybody about the importance of water conservation, you know? Uh, we are for years now and looking into the future, looking at an extended drought period, so we always wanna remind everyone to be mindful of water usage, not to waste any water. Uh, the Board of Water Supply is participating in many different rebate, rebate programs, so uh, if you purchase a rain barrel for your home, you know, a lot of people like the workshops, but you can also go to uh some of the big box stores and purchase rain barrels, and the Board of Water Supply will provide a forty-dollar rebate uh, as well as changing out toilets, older toilets to the new water sensible, low-flush uh toilets, we are offering a forty-five-dollar rebate, so you can always go to our website uh, www boardofwatersupply.com and in the search box, just type in rebates, and you can see a list of residential and commercial rebate programs that we participate in. Uh, we encourage everyone as we go into the new year, check your home for leaks, you know, leaking toilet flapper valves over time, those small little, what seems like a small leak adds up to a lot of wasted water over time. Uh, recommend using nozzles on garden hoses, whether it's for yard work or washing cars, you know, don't just let the hose run down the street. And consider uh planting drought tolerant plants, you know, low-water usage plants. We provide workshops throughout the year on drought tolerant uh plants as well. And there's information on our website about water conservation, boardofwatersupply.com/leakdetection. And at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions on behalf of the Board of Water Supply.
I see that Robert's back, is Robert able to take the gavel back?
Yes, I am, thank you so much, Dave, I apologize to everybody, dog was running a wild outside, so I had to um come and corral him back in. Ellen, go ahead.
Thank you, hey Dominic, um, the Board of Water Supply is raising our rates like a lot for a long period of time, and they are trying to recover the funds from the Navy for the expenses that were incurred about Red Hill. So my question to the Board of Water Supply is, if they, if they get reimbursement of whatever, a billion dollars or something from the Navy, are they gonna then refund us ratepayers that have to front the money till they get it from the neighbors, so we don't have to have the rate increases? Because it's not my fault that they screwed up on Red Hill, but I gotta pay for it, and I think that's not okay.
I, I understand that, uh, the rate increases are, there's mul- multiple parts of the rate increases, not the rate increase is not necessarily to recover the costs associated with the events that happened at Red Hill. Uh, you know, if you look at the Board of Water Supply's cost, construction costs over the past years have escalated uh drastically, Hawaii Electric is raising their rates, our largest fixed cost in operations is electricity. We spent over thirty million dollars on electricity last year alone, and that's gonna go up. So these cost increases accommodate our ability to do construction projects that we would normally have to do regardless of what happened at Red Hill. The Red Hill issue will be, you know, we're going after costs related to projects that have had to occur to replace source development that we lost in the events at Red Hill. The rate increase is all related to the escalating cost of repairing pipes, operating our systems and other aspects of how we operate our business that are also escalating. So it's sort of, for the time being, we've had to pull back on our capital improvement program because we don't have the money to do everything, we have to reduce the number of capital improvement projects that we're doing. And ideally, we would put out a bunch more work, we would be replacing a lot more mains as well as looking for additional source projects and all these other things, but we've had to prioritize projects for now. But the cost increases are not just solely based on recovering monies related to Red Hill.
Thank you very much, uh, let's see, anybody else from the uh, board have any questions? Members of the community? Any members of the community have any questions for the Board of Water Supply? Hearing and seeing none, thank you very much.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have uh Kim, Kim Sparland from Mayor Belangiardi's office, Kim, are you there?
Oh, hi, Robert Zane, um, uh Chair, Zane, um, yeah, if you didn't get uh Kim's message in her email, uh, she messaged that she probably won't be able to come in today.
Okay, thanks for the update, Hanson, uh, so next we'll have Councilmember Say.
Okay, thank you very much, before I start, let me say happy new year to all of you, and thank you very much for your service. And Robert, thank you very much for being the chair. First and foremost, you do have my monthly report in the chat, and I think you folks can take a look at it. But I wanted to talk about the announcements that occurred during the past two months that occurred. First and foremost, I did report in regards to Fire Chief How's uh update on the Peady Drive fire. Then I have to go on to announce that Kama, Kamuneli Park, which is an interpretive park in Manoa has a interpretive sign that was put up by the organization, and it was written in Olelo Hawaii and English. Was installed near the Hea'au on Saturday, December second, twenty twenty-three. Mahalo to Ehiku, Hana'u Ma Na on your work on this project and the gift to, of this sign to the City and County of Honolulu. Next, we have a Department of Design and Construction announce that the curb ramp project on Oahu Avenue will begin on Tuesday, January sixteen, at twenty twenty-four through July of twenty twenty-four. Work is expected to run on weekdays from eight-thirty to three-thirty excluding holidays, and the curbs affected are the following. Varsity Place and University Avenue, South King Street and University Avenue. And the news release for all of us that I think we should communicate to our residents of Manoa is that Mayor Belangiardi, in regard to the twenty twenty-four real property tax notice of assessments applicable to the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five tax year will be distributed to property owners across Oahu. Important dates for all of us to remember is that from twelve fifteen of twenty twenty-three the county did distribute approximately three hundred and six thousand notices UPS PS or email from twelve fifteen to twelve twenty-three through one twelve twenty twenty-four. Property owners should call the appeals hotline if they are gonna appeal their assessments. And the number is given to you in the chat also during the business hours of seven forty-five AM and four thirty PM. On January twelfth, these are all the deadlines in regard to real property tax. Hand-delivered appeals must be received and accepted by four thirty PM Hawaii Standard Time. And for one fifteen of twen- January fifteenth of twenty twenty-four, appeals filed, filed online at www realproperty slash honolulu.com must be completed and submitted by eleven fifty-nine PM Hawaii Standard Time. Finally, for twelve uh thirty-one of twenty twenty-three, property owners who have not received their twenty twenty-four assessment notice are advised to call eight oh eight seven six eight seven thousand or visit one of the following offices, the Real Property Assessment Division at eight four two Bethel Street Basement and at Kapole is the Real Property Assessment Division of a thousand Uluohia uh Street number two oh six at Kapole Hawaii at nine six seven zero seven. Please convey this concern to the residents who feel that their assessments were not in line with their neighboring properties. Website links, I think all of you are concerned, and I think uh Mr. Watase would talk about the Alawai Watershed Flood Control Project, the US Corps of Engineers Honolulu District Civil Works Project, Monthly CIP for the Neighborhood Board Number Seven. We have the Manoa Street Po'lu'a Street Flood Control Improvement which is done by Hawaii Works, which is twenty-seven percent completed at a point of one point five million that was appropriated. And we also have for Manoa Valley District Park Gymnasium Number Two and multi-purpose building roof improvements done by MEI Corporation of two point three million, and that will be done sometime this year. Long-term projects for all of us, I think for the new board members, there, for the Manoa Banning Court, there are no updates. For the Mid Pacific Institute Traffic Concerns, Director of Safety and Security Brad Heatherly responded with the following updates. Mid-Pac continues to monitor traffic and communicate to families about traffic courtesies and updates. The next traffic message is scheduled to be sent to all families on January eighth. To ease parking congestion in the neighborhood starting this month, Mid-Pac has introduced an additional twenty on-campus student parking spaces. In December, Brad Heatherly, Director of Safety and Security, met with Major Brian Lynch of the Honolulu Police Department, District Seven to go over the issues that have occurred by the residents of that particular area. And that is about it, except for, for, for the lower part of Manoa. Pahua Ridge Resolution was transmitted to the council through Communication M dash six three five of twenty twenty-three. It is pending the referral and numbering, but will be likely heard in the January tenth Committee on Zoning, which I do chair. Okay, for all of you, understand that, January tenth will be the hearing on this resolution on Pahua Ridge. And that's the lower part by the O Y Li Road. And I'll conclude by saying to all of you, thank you very much for your public service as board members of Manoa. Thank you very much, Robert.
Thank you, Calvin, uh, let's see, I first saw Patty, Patty, go ahead.
Thank you Chair, um, hi Calvin, happy new year to you.
Happy new year.
Thank you for the comprehensive report that you share with us. Thank you for the comprehensive report that you share with us. Um, so my question relates to Pahua Ridge. So you're saying it's gonna be up for um discussion on the January tenth council meeting, right? Uh, is it the zoning committee or the entire council?
Just the zoning committee. At that point, with the hip, with the public participation, we can amend it to present it to the full council.
Okay, um, is there any testimony allowed at that meeting or?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. There's a lot. If you folks wanna do really come out and testify in amending the resolution that is being presented to us by Department of Planning and Permitting, I'll be more than happy to receive those.
Okay, great. Um, I wanna make, make it really quick. I, I don't know, are you willing to share what your stance is at this point? About what the direction votes, the, your zoning committee will take on this project at all?
Well, Patty, for me, and I think for some of the board members during the past year, that uh they made these presentations at the town hall meetings, at the St. Louis Clubhouse, and at the three neighborhood boards. You know, I have the opinion that I think they should try to accommodate the concerns voiced by the residents. I, I feel very awkward about having a big project there where it's right adjacent to the on-ramp to the H one freeway. I'm also concerned about the long thoroughfare from the Kapuhulu area all the way down to the O Y Li Road. So traffic conditions was one of them. The height was another one. The number of units was another one. But I do support some form of providing affordable housing for our future residents and generations for the future.
I completely agree with you, and um I do want affordable housing, but there um the application that the developer submitted is very convoluted. There is like an option three that's very troubling because it's a market rate basically, so I would like to, um, I think there's a resident at the, um, she's not here tonight, but she asked for a meeting with you. Um, if you have time, would you spare us an hour to listen to our concern? And I have some thought on how, how we can make it a win-win for everybody.
Okay, great. No, no, why don't you do that?
I'll reach out to you privately.
Yeah, Patty, today, Wednesday, I'd be more than happy to meet with you folks either Friday, Monday, Tuesday, because the hearing is Wednesday.
That'd be great, yeah, cuz I, I feel that we, we can make it work that there can, some kind of affordable housing, but not at the scale of this. And I have some thought about how it can make traffic better. I know there's a federal government, I saw some news about how they have these, um, I don't know the term, but about role maintenance or having traffic flow. Maybe we can tap into that and just maybe revamp the whole um area cuz I think, you know, it's with the development and everything, it's really due for a redo to make it safer for everybody. And I think Representative Garrett was um on board with that thought too, so. But I don't wanna take more time, so I wanna thank you very much for your help, and I will reach out to you um tomorrow.
Patty, before we close the conversation, I did get to see uh Representative Garrett's uh comments that was submitted as part of the overall plan, and then also Rep. Senator Ihara's uh comments also.
Okay, yeah, thanks. I think we can make it a work for, for everybody if the developer can make some adjustment. And for us, federal, state, city, government can work together to make this work for everyone.
Okay.
Thank you again.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Ellen, go ahead.
Thank you. I don't know, Calvin, if you're the person that I need to talk to, but uh at Manoa Elementary School, i- it may be state, but uh Manoa Elementary School, by their faculty parking, by the little road that cuts through to Manoa District Park.
Yeah.
They removed their old sign and they installed a great big um electric flat panel sign that I mean, it says winter break, and it says what the schedule is gonna be, and it says Happy New Year, and it says Manoa Elementary School. And so think of the sign that's on the corner of Kapulani and Ward. And when you're sitting there and the Blaze Dell runs their blurbs and flashes and graphics and all kind of crap, right? So they have that going on their sign for the faculty parking. So no parents see it, no drop-off kids see it because of the location, and it runs electricity twenty-four hours a day. And it's just flashing these graphics and all kinds of computer-generated crap. And so I think it's light pollution and it's noise pollution. Because if you go by there, by the pine tree area.
Yes.
You hear the wind in the Norfolk pines. You don't hear that. You hear because of the cooling.
I remember I had to jump in for time just to see if enough time to get through the agenda.
And I think, I think that it, it creates distracted driving too cuz people come along that lane, they make a tight C-turn, then they have to straighten out and not run over kids or bicyclists, and you got all this stuff flashing in your face.
Ellen, Ellen, we're gonna stop right now.
And somebody from the state told me they thought that cost two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Quarter of a million dollars.
Ellen, Ellen, hold on, Ellen. We gotta, we gotta move on, Ellen.
So Ellen, I'll follow up with that with uh Representative Garrett and Senator Fukunaga. Okay? Robert, is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. Thanks, thanks, Calvin.
You're welcome.
Um, let's see. Anybody else in the board? I don't see any other hands raised, members of the board. I'm gonna go to the audience now. Laura?
Uh, yes, thank you very quickly. Um, um, Calvin, can you tell us, are you intending to run for office in this next term, or are you termed out? Thank you.
I, I am considering running for reelection at this point in time. And I'm gonna be have, honestly to all of you, I'll be having a medical examination to determine my health.
Okay, thank you.
And if everything is clear, I'm very much interested in continuing on running for the district that I've represented the past three years.
Thank you, Calvin, for the update. We really appreciate that. Uh, let's see. Daisy?
Thank you, Chair. Hi, Calvin. My question is, um, if uh Pahua Ridge is located in the special Kapuhula District, that means height limit is thirty to sixty feet only, like on Kapuhula Avenue. Now, is that part of the uh resolution? If not, it should be.
Well.
I'm not against affordable, but there's a height limit.
Well, Daisy, I'm depending a lot as far as the plans at the request of Department of Planning and Permitting. They are the experts with the department as far as the plans and design of what Pahua Ridge is all about. And I'll listen to what DPP has to say in regards to this Kapuhulu develop, special design district.
Okay, because if they're on board, they're supposed to have told the developer in the first place. Then they understand. I'm not against affordable rental, that's great.
Right.
Just that, that's a very dangerous position. Trying to, do you think they'll be able to go across all the way to the freeway? No. So that's something to really think about. Thank you.
No, thank you, because that particular issue was addressed in the overall submittal to the uh City Council by DPP with the concurrence of, with the concurrence of the State Department of Transportation and the City and County Department of Transportation Services, those two respective departments, one at the state level and one at the county level. It is a concern. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, I, I saw David S. had his hand raised next.
Uh, Calvin, I didn't get the resolution number. What was the resolution number?
It hasn't been referred yet.
Oh, I haven't referred yet.
It hasn't been referred yet.
Okay.
But see, David, David, I'm stuck. As a Chair of the Committee on Zoning, I am stuck because of what we talked about the past year in regards to Hawaii revised statute two oh one H.
Okay.
Forty-five days to get it done, or else it becomes, you know, an approved project.
So how will we be able to see what DPP wrote and submitted to the committee?
Probably when we get the communication. Oh, the communication has come down.
Yeah, hi, this is Janelle from Councilman Stacey's office. I just put the link in the chat for the communication um that was sent over from the HHFDC, who was the receiving agency. And then we're, we're still waiting for it to get numbered as a resolution and um referred to committee.
Committee.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Dylan Armstrong. Dylan? Sorry, Dylan, we still can't hear you. No, still can't hear you, Dylan. Try to speak, uh. Yeah, sorry, Dylan. I'm gonna have to um pass on Dylan for now, uh while he works on the audio issues. Do I see any other hands raised at this time? Hearing and, oh, uh, vaguely, Dylan, vaguely. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you for your patience, Chair Zane. It's good to uh see all of you, uh, members of Manoa Neighborhood Board and Councilmember Calvin Say, uh, Happy New Year. And I did wanna provide a brief comment.
Yes.
Uh, no one would better deserve retirement if uh circumstances favor that for you and your Ohana, Councilmember, but I would, in my severe way, wanna emphasize that Hawaii is going through a real leadership crisis right now. Um, I do not share uh some of your uh colleagues' esteem for the current uh incoming members of the council, um, and other than our current representative and Senator here on Manoa, much of the legislature, all of the recent research of major importance on climate change is very dark. This is a rough time for our nation. And I think the stunningly superficial lack of uh depth from some of our po- uh political leaders on budgets and science and these issues like we're seeing with Red Hill uh previously mentioned, uh I actually deeply appreciate your experience in spite of our recent di- disagreement on uh the pay raises and some other issues. So please consider, if you can, uh, running for reelection. Thank you.
Dylan, may I just respond by saying thank you very much for your vote of confidence, but my point today and this evening is that I'm gonna go to see a cardiologist on January twenty-second to check out my health. I thank all of you very hon- honestly and sincerely, all of the, all of you, talking to my wife. This makes uh forty-eight years in public service, which I have really enjoyed. And, you know, like for, for Ellen and everyone else, Elton, who worked with me, Laura, et cetera. No, I enjoy public service, but I think I have to be selfish because if my health is not as, you know, healthy as what it should be, you know, I should be considering pressing on the torch. And I think, Dylan, someday you should be in that particular position. But thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, Elton, you have your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yes, I guess, Chair. Uh, Councilmembers say, uh, I just wanna wish you the best of health, and I hope everything turns out positively in terms of that uh medical exam.
So, I'm just like you because I wanna spend some time with my wife.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments or hands raised? Hearing and seeing none. I'm gonna repeat the, the comments of everybody else. We wish you the best and hope your health is really good. Wish you uh a good new year, Calvin, and looking forward to seeing more of you in the future.
Thank you very much to all of you. I've enjoyed the past three years, and I enjoy this upcoming year also as far as getting things done on behalf of the people of Oahu and the state of Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on for state monthly reports, do we have somebody from Senator Fukunaga's office in attendance? Okay.
Yes. Howdy. Aloha. Uh, I believe we circulated my uh committee report. It was uh linked to the chat. And part of what I wanted to do today is uh extend my thanks to those Manoa residents who participated in the Army Corps of Engineers um public discussion forum. Uh, Scott Snyder, Elton Fukumoro, Valerie Wong, and Ray Tabata raised some very good points about the lack of consistent stream maintenance on both the city and state's part over the last several years. And I think as we have begun to see a lot of the uh climate change and recent developments that University of Hawaii has been participating in, the um the comments and the perspectives that many Manoa residents have raised is actually uh becoming a much, much bigger um condition that I think we should be looking at as we submit comments on this uh current supplemental draft DIS. So thank you also to Neighborhood Board members who are um considering a resolution expressing your concerns about uh certain parts of the um EIS. And I just wanted to highlight very briefly that we had had um a very positive meeting with some of the um community organizations and Citar resource people earlier in December. And one of the things that is very encouraging and will be um kind of following up with Manoa Neighborhood Board and Makiki Neighborhood Board is that some of the federal wildfire grants are um uh among the areas that we will be able to participate in, partly because representatives of the uh Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization did pursue the grants that were um issued, I mean, whose deadline was earlier this year. So um two things, you know, the uh HWMO and Citar can help us with a lot of the mapping questions that some of the organizations came up with. And I think there'll be um additional federal grants that we would potentially be eligible for within our region. And then just finally, a quick note to thank everyone who attended our um first uh Neighborhood Security Watch meeting. We uh had a chance to recognize founder Norman Wong, and we also had a chance to recruit some new members. So that was really a, a fun meeting. And with that, I'll take any questions. I know you have um, um, the resolution coming up, so I don't wanna take too much time on my portion.
Thank you very much. Members of the board, any questions or comments? I do not see any hands raised. Members of the community? Hearing and seeing none. Senator, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have, I believe, Representative Garrett.
Good evening, Chair and members of the board, members of the community. Happy New Year. Great to be here once again. Um, likewise, like Senator Fukunaga, just wanna try to keep this brief cuz I know you have a robust discussion on the Alawai flood control project coming up. But in the chat box, I did um include our winter newsletter, which is uh the same one that voters in the twenty-second district uh should have received last week. Um, in the newsletter itself, you'll see a QR code, which is a link to our community survey. So if you haven't done so, uh, encourage you to complete that. If you want a hard copy, please call our office and we'll be sure to get that out to you. Um, we're roughly, we're actually exactly two weeks away from the legislature convening for the twenty twenty-four session. Um, but uh there's already a lot of activity at the Capitol. Um, you know, I serve on the House Finance Committee. And starting um today, we had some informational briefings from the executive branch, um, as well as the state economists to hear about the supplemental budget requests as we try to craft the uh FY twenty-five budget, the add-ons essentially. Um, there are some new laws that went into effect with the new year that I uh just wanted to bring up real briefly. Um, the minimum wage um did increase in Hawaii. Now we're up to fourteen dollars as of January one. It is eventually um gonna go up to eighteen dollars in the next uh four years, I believe. Um, there was also the bill that went into effect regarding paid transparency. This is a gender equity bill, which requires uh most job listings to have the salaries posted. And another bill that I wanted to highlight was the tax on electronic smoking devices, e-cigs, if you will. Um, this taxation went into effect as well, too. So just wanted to let you know, those three items went into effect uh just a few days ago. Um, I'm still working on drafting bills for this upcoming session. We still have a few weeks to submit those. Um, but we do have a limit of ten because we're in the second year of our two-year session. Um, but at the February meeting, I will definitely give you a rundown on the bills I've introduced and explain the rationale for each. And then lastly, just wanted to introduce uh Laura, who is on um this call. Uh, she's gonna serve as our legislative aide this session. Uh, she's a resident of Manoa Valley. Very fortunate to have her. So she'll be assisting with a lot of the community efforts. So in the rare event that I can't make a Neighborhood Board meeting, she may be pinching for me. So with that, I'll stop there and uh see if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any mem- members of the board have any questions for Representative Garrett? I don't see any hands raised. Members of the community? Hearing and seeing none. Andrew, thank you very much for your time.
My pleasure. Hope to see you guys on opening day. Take care, everyone.
Take care. Next up, we have uh University of Hawaii Elmer. Elmer, anybody from the University of Hawaii in attendance tonight? I'm not hearing or seeing anybody moving on to Representative, oh sorry, Governor Josh Green's representative Francine. Hello? Anybody? Hearing and seeing none. We're gonna move right on then to the presentations. Dave Watase. The floor is yours.
I'm gonna share my screen. Okay, it's up. Aloha and Happy New Year, Chair Zane and Manoa Neighborhood Board members. First, I want to thank you, all of you, for your service to our home and our community. You are the protectors of Manoa Valley and your actions do make a difference. Again, my name is Dave Watase. I've been following the Alawai flood mitigation project since two thousand fifteen. And attended almost every related meeting. I've gone through all the studies and reports dating back to nineteen ninety-eight. And not once do I recall any community member suggesting more concrete flood walls. The Army Corps published their draft supplemental E I S on Thanksgiving Day. And the end of the comment period is in five days. The project costs one point zero seven five billion dollars and the benefit is nine hundred five million dollars. The project includes flood walls near Woodlawn, Koali Road and around the Alawai Canal and Golf Course. The project is designed to mitigate the fifty-year flood. Previous projects were designed for the hundred-year flood. The project with flood walls is the worst alternative because it leaves the canal open to the ocean. The canal is tidal influenced and subject to high tides, tide surges and sea level rise. A downgraded hurricane with a minor four-foot tide surge and combined with a high tide. Will negate any benefits of the six-foot-high flood wall. The flood walls require all interior storm drainage to be capped off for several hours. The flood walls will induce flooding to Kapahulu, Moiliili, Makali, Almoana and Makiki. Flood walls will require flood mitigation to seven E structures. And the Army Corps assumes one hundred percent participation with the private landowners. It will be the opposite, one hundred percent no participation. And they will have to. A- acquire through condemnation uh the private lands. Which they priced as high as five point four seven billion dollars. And is a responsibility of the non-federal sponsor, which in this case is the city. We believe there are better, more economical, feasible solutions that are not tidal influenced that we can get behind. And support, which include underground tunnels that capture floodwaters at high elevations. Bypassing the canal, going straight to the Alawai Harbor to handle the upper watershed floodwaters. A floodgate and lock system at the Almoana Boulevard Bridge and a flood pump on the golf course. Networked to the tunnels to bypass the canal to handle the lower watershed floodwaters. I'll point out some of the obvious things with the Army Corps' plan. Figure one, which I, which is up on the screen right now. This uh to the left is the project uh without. And to the right with fifty-year flood, with the fifty-year flood model. A false representation uh without the project is that the Woodlawn Bridge uh. Should not be overtopping. And if you look at the Woodlawn Bridge in Manoa Valley, uh right by that little uh. Uh turn in the stream, it shows it all flooding down. Well. The Army Corps did not include um D L N R's two thousand sixteen improvement in their study. If they had. All that blue going down to the quarry uh would not exist. Uh if you look at on the right uh with project. Waikiki has no blue. Even though it will flood if you close off all the storm drainage. But their main focus is to help Waikiki. But if you look, there are many areas, Maoka of the canal. That are all in blue. So you kinda have to ask your question, you know, uh is this project. For the benefit of all and we are taxpayers that will be paying for it. Uh or is it just for Waikiki? If you look at uh on the right, uh where Alawai Elementary School is and Iolani School. And they have a wall uh right next to their properties. Okay, again here, they are shown as flooded. Okay, figure two. So these are the elements of the project. It's a series of walls and levees. The pink is the levee around the golf course. Uh but they call for L-walls uh at Woodlawn and L-walls around Koali uh subdivision. And I'm mainly gonna focus on the areas that are within your district map. And I think uh Koali area is also in, in your district area. So this right here is the Woodlawn Wall, six foot high. And it's only on the Makai side of the stream. So that's why if the stream overtops, uh it's gonna flood the residents of Manoa that are Maoka of the stream. Uh also um it goes around the University of Hawaii's uh horticulture. And basically, all it does is maybe protect some greenhouses. But in reality, that area is at a higher elevation. So. Um as I mentioned before, if they had updated their flood model, um this wall would not be needed at all. Okay, this is the wall. Okay, um the walls have forty-foot long micro piles. To support the sixty-foot wall. And you can just imagine the amount of construction. Uh that's gonna be involved in building this kind of wall. And again, I think alternatives are simply uh deepening. Uh the opening under the bridge, uh having a bypass on the side, increasing the slope or having even a drop. Uh before the bridge. So again, you can make the opening bigger. And uh the two thousand and four flood uh was really due to debris buildup. Okay, so um this next figure is from the uh report on the two thousand and four flood event. That caused eighty million dollars of damage to the University of Hawaii. And I think around five million to the residents uh in all of Manoa. But that also includes, if you look at the red, uh you know, the hillside on Taples, which really. It's impossible to protect. It's a waterfall over there. But if you look at the other areas of red. They're all around the bridges, right? And that's from debris. Right? So this report actually reinforces the need for ecosystem restoration. And better stream maintenance and management. Okay, this is the uh, the wall around the Koali subdivision. Uh and by the way, uh all their walls will require some major bridges to be closed for several hours. Including the Koali Bridge right here. Uh but this wall is only on one side of the stream. And all the drainage will be shut down. And you can imagine, uh if you look here, if any of you are familiar with that old white light road. It's actually level with Koali Road. That bridge is level and flat. So if you build a six-foot-high wall on the other side and the water is that high. It's actually gonna flood into the old white light road and probably go all the way down to Kapahulu. But the Army Corps' modeling doesn't show any of that. So um I think their engineering and their modeling is wrong. The other thing, if you look at this uh uh figure right here, uh if you, if you shut down all the drainage. You got Kaniwai Park and all the water that collects in the park is basically gonna go down. To and flood Hokalani School and the subdivision. Okay, the next figure is actually the storm drainage system for Saint Louis Heights. Okay, and if you look at it, everything from Allen Castor to the uh west. Um or half of Saint Louis Heights basically drains through Kaniwai Park. Okay, and there's a big covert over there. I used to play in it when I was little, five years old. And um that's gonna be, has to be shut off. So you don't get the backflow. Again, if they shut that down, basically the whole sub watershed of Saint Louis Heights is gonna end up in Koali subdivision. And basically the waters could be entrapped by their, the Army Corps' six-foot-high flood wall. So, the way I see this, this is a one-billion-dollar concrete project. That further channelizes our precious and limited natural waterways. Uh please support the resolution. Uh I'm not gonna get into details on it. I did help draft uh the resolution uh that the Diamond Head. Uh Cup, Kapahulu, Saint Louis Heights Neighborhood Board uh passed uh early uh on the fifteenth. And um I think one of your board members, Elton Fukumoto, uh you know, read through it. And authored your own resolution. And I've gone through it and I fully support it. I hope all of you um will vote for it. Uh time is of the essence. Uh we have five more days to uh try and pass it and make it official and send it to the uh city and Army Corps. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Uh let's see. Do we have any, oh I see Patty, your hands raised?
Yes, thank you Chair. Um hi Dave, thank you so much for always keeping track of this plan all these years with your precious time and. Educating us about this plan. Um my question or concern is, as she mentioned, there is gonna be a wall by the bottom of Manoa Stream by Koali Road. And you did say that if like the large flood happens. Because it's on the Koali Road side of the, of, of the road, of the stream, would the floodwater be pushed to the other side, which is the bottom of Kali Roll? Um flooding that and, and Alawai Roll as well and maybe part of New Vicino or campus because I believe they're. They're uh below the level of the stream.
From what I can tell, uh based on the topography, I, I think it, it could flood the areas. Uh be- below the old li- white light road. Uh including the new project, which, you know, the affordable housing project. I think that's within the vicinity. But. Uh that area does kinda go uphill before you go down into the quarry and onto the on-ramp. So um. I don't think it's gonna overtop it to the quarry from that side. Um it doesn't look like it. The modeling doesn't show that it's gonna seep through that area. But uh if you do look at the project without conditions and even with. Uh you can see where uh below the Palolo Stream is in blue, right? And that's exactly above the H-one freeway and below the, the old white light road. Um that there's some blue over there. Yeah. So if you look at this map, uh right in the corner, you know. I don't have a point, maybe I can point it with my mouse, but you know, right, right here. So even with the project conditions. And over here without this area floods. And that's right before the H-one on-ramp and the old white light roll.
Okay, I see. Thanks. Yeah, cuz I actually brought up that point to the Pohorich. Meeting. I attended the H H F D C meeting and the developer didn't even know about this Alawai flood plan at all. So that tells you how much they know about. What they're doing. They just wanted to bill, bill, bill. They didn't have an answer for um what I pointed out. So I'm hoping. Someone from City Council would, or maybe Councilman say will address that as well in his um discussion with the, with, with the group. But thank you, Dave.
And, and thank you for um being, you know, an advocate, you know, standing up against the project. Um you know, I live up Saint Louis Heights. I use that on-ramp every day. And um it's not a good location. Um I'm all for affordable housing. But I think it's too high, too dense. And as Diamond Head, uh Kapahulu, Saint Louis Heights Neighborhood Board uh were discussing. Uh they feel that all these high rises are encroaching uh going east. And what they fear is Kapahulu becoming a kaka aku. And before you know it, Diamond Head uh would be surrounded by high rises and all those views blocked. So. I, I'm totally against that, that project. You know, I, I think it needs to be lowered and downsized. And they need to make sure that they mitigate the traffic. You, you, there's gonna be traffic problems here. That, that's right at the corner, right at the, the on-ramp. And I just don't see how they, they're gonna get away with it. But they may, right? But thank you.
Next up, Member Fox.
Uh thank you. Um I urge everyone to support this resolution. Um yesterday, we met with the mayor. Because we were concerned that he was supporting the Army Corps of Engineers' proposal. Uh there seems to be. A confusion in the administration as to whether they can alter uh the project. Given the funding that has been approved supposedly. I've worked with the Army Corps of Engineers for twenty-five years. My understanding is that. You don't alter a project, the, the, the funding comes first and it's stuck with the project. So I urge us to please, please support this resolution. We have a viable company, Oceanette, who has given us a fantastic plan. Uh that mirrors the actual topography of Manoa, which is the old Moiliili caves. Uh. What a brilliant idea, you know, to listen to our kapuna, listen to our history, listen to why we didn't flood in the past. Yes, there is no compensation or even consideration for the idea of maintenance. I met with Russell in Kapale, who is head of our maintenance department for the city and county of Honolulu. And he recommended that we spend thirty-four million dollars on albezia tree maintenance because that is a big issue in our valley. These trees were planted because of King Kamehameha the third bringing the albezie's in from the Solomon Islands. They are very fragile trees. They grow fifteen feet a year. We've had meetings at the Manoa Theater about the albezia trees. We know what a problem they are. So not only would we like to alter this plan, but we'd like to include a hundred million dollars to remove the existing huge albezia trees. In our valleys. We are never gonna solve a flooding problem unless we remove the invasive species, which happens to be. I, I'm sure at the time in eighteen forty-eight, this was a brilliant idea of bringing trees in. But they didn't know about invasive species and they didn't know about what the effect it would have. I mean, how many of us go up the Manoa Stream and pull saplings and seedlings and stuff twice a year? And we don't get paid for it. So I think this plan that the Army Corps of Engineers has proposed is short-sighted. It doesn't work as Dave has so well pointed out. In fact, our discussion yesterday was so. Amazing to me that the amount of engineering flaw that is in the Army Corps of Engineers' report, stunning. I mean, I come from an engineering family. My father was Vice President of Ford Motor Company.
Trying to wrap it up if you uh can, just cuz other people might wanna speak.
I believe that we need to support the resolution um and move forward with some common sense. And better community participation. We cannot accept the idea that three-quarters of a meeting is. Thirty-year-old young people from Washington D C telling us what to do. And then having fifteen minutes to express, express our opinions with a hundred people in the meeting. That's not community involvement. So I urge us again, just please support.
I, I'm done with my presentation. Um I think Elton can take over. Board member Elton Fukamoto can take over to talk about the resolution. And hopefully, somebody can make a motion to take action on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Dave, just in case though, we haven't gotten to the point where the resolution is not just on the discussion yet. We still have a couple of members of the community now who have their hands raised. Daisy Mudai, do you have any questions for Dave?
Yes, um, Dave, just curious.
Oh, sorry, Dave, uh, sorry. I was trying to see if, uh, sorry, David, hold on. I called on Daisy Mudai. Her hand was raised before yours.
My bad.
No, 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 it's fine. Thank you for, thank you for understanding. Daisy, are you still there? Since she's not responding, David, go ahead.
Okay, uh, Dave, just curious. In the Army Corps report, on the major drainage channels and culverts that exist, did, did they indicate one-hundred percent capacity clear culverts? Or did they account for floods in the current conditions in, in most cases, where the, there's vegetation and material already in the culverts?
Um, if I understand, basically, the Army Corps is, is gating off, uh, putting flaps and, you know, shutting off the existing storm drainage. There's no money in the project for stream maintenance. That's the responsibility of the, of the city. They're basically doing flood mitigation. Now, originally, in nineteen ninety-eight, and even on the two thousand seventeen report, the hydrology study references that this project was supposed to have ecosystem restoration with flood mitigation. The Army Corps abandoned that idea in two thousand seventeen. So it's, you know, the community wants both. And, you know, we try to emphasize that, but, you know, they don't listen to the community.
Okay, no, that answers the question. It's flawed, for sure, to assume that the culverts are clean and everything, and based upon the conditions, especially based upon the original designs, in which some, some cases, they're, they're back to the fifties.
Yeah, it's gonna be a maintenance thing, and I think many residents brought that up, that, you know, all it takes is a branch, or a log or something, or rock, you know, to get stuck in one of those floodgates. And then it doesn't shut off, and you get backflow, and, and it causes flooding, you know, behind the wall.
Right. Okay, thank you. Thank you. And then Scott Snyder.
Can you folks hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hey, Dave, thank you for that. Yeah, I needed an opinion from you on this thing. I'm, I'm doing a lot of reading on this report. The Woodlawn Drive flood, flood wall, there's a gap in the wall. It, it spans Woodlawn Drive, so essentially, there's a gap, and it looks like they're calling for gates to be put on Woodlawn Drive to prevent people from driving on the road during a flood. And what I can't, I'm having a hard time telling in the report if, if those gates are actual floodgates, where they're gonna carry the water over the bridge, or are they just vehicular gates? Do you have any idea about that at this point?
It's not clear. I'm assuming that they're gonna have some kind of floodgate. All the other bridges, uh, Cop, uh, Kalakaua, McCully Bridge, King Street Bridge, bridge near Kamaki High School, Kapialani Bridge near Kapialani High School, I mean, Kamaki High School, Date Street Bridge, they all show little Xs that they're gonna be gated off. I think they just forgot to, to put their little X on the Woodlawn Bridge, because how can you have a six-foot-high wall, right, above the bridge? And then you hit the bridge, and there's no wall, and it doesn't make sense. So my guess is there's gonna be some kind of gate, floodgate, so that the water can pass over the bridge, like all the other bridges that, you know, that they're gonna gate off. And again, that doesn't make sense, right? You're shutting down major roads going in and out of Waikiki. And they think it's okay to do that for six hours. I don't get it. But, and not only that, but the bridge itself becomes an obstruction in the flow. And I've pointed all those things out to them, and they just ignore it. So, um, I'm just gonna fight the project and, you know, point out the flaws. And hopefully, somebody reads it and, you know, they make the corrections to it.
Yeah, just so everyone, yeah, so everyone knows it's, there's, I think it's twenty-five gates. And the, the human error, you know, the city can't even maintain the streams now. So the human error involved in getting those closed and how it's gonna actually operate, it's, it's massive. I mean, it could, I could see a lot of stuff going wrong with those gates. And there's a lot of problems with the Woodlawn Drive wall. They're gonna, they're gonna build it on top of a, another wall, one foot behind it, with, like he mentioned, macro piles. So there's a, none of that makes sense. And I don't think we've thought through it at this point. That's it for me.
Shoot.
Thank you.
Chair, are you okay?
Dave, can you hear me?
Take over, yeah?
Yeah, sorry. If you can hear me, my computer's acting up again. I need you to take over. I'm sorry if you can't.
All right, got it. All right, um, in that case, let's go to, um, let's see, is anyone else from the community having your hands raised? Um, I see Daisy Marai has a hand raised. So is Daisy there?
Yes, thank you. I had the mute button. I attended the same presentation with Dave and Laura Ruby, and asked the mayor, can we afford the one billion dollars? We thought was still maybe four hundred million or seven hundred million. It became a billion dollars. And he said, oh, no problem. It's not gonna raise taxes. The other concern is at the very end of where against the Alawais Canal, they're gonna have extra-wide concrete sidewalks. And guess what? No landscaping, no grass, no coconut tree, nothing. So try to imagine walking on the hot pavement with your dog. You're gonna have heat stroke. Also, the walls will be right next door to it, and also, they'll be hot. So this doesn't make sense at all. And part of it looks like it might be part of the Honolulu Complete Street project for Alawais. So I suggest you go to the city website, honolulu.gov/dts, and look under the Honolulu Complete Streets, and you can see what's happening in that area, cuz it's gonna affect everybody. But Dave is correct. There, it doesn't make sense what they're doing now. Thank you.
Thank you, Daisy.
All right, and next we see Laura Ruby. Go ahead.
Yeah, just adding on to some things that Daisy just said, too. Imagine if you are a bicyclist, and you are going down Alawais Boulevard. You are gonna be going down the, next to the Berlin Wall is basically what you're gonna be doing. You're not gonna be seeing anything. The cars, the cars that drive along there will not see anything more than the concrete. What, what if you're a canoe paddler, and you're in the canal? What do you paddle in between two Berlin Walls? We're talking about the quality of life that we wanna live, and we wanna talk about the idea that the tourism is certainly gonna be compromised by these, these huge massive intrusions of concrete walls in our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Laura. Um, do we have any other, um, community members or board members who have questions or comments for Mr. Watase? All right, hearing and seeing none. I will end the agenda item and take us on to our next one, which I believe is the resolution. So, it's my understanding, this was co-drafted by members Fukamoto and Watson. So I'll open up to the two of them to give us the rundown of the resolution and, and make the presentation.
Thank you, Chair. This is member Fukamoto. I, I would first like to ask a question of neighborhood assistant or one of the vice chairs, vice chair or the chair, or perhaps Dave Watase. Would you be able to put up the resolution on screen? My camera doesn't work, so I think that's, if you do it, it'd be best. So I sent it to, well, everybody at this meeting, who's on the board should have a copy of the resolution. But Anson, are you able to put it up on screen?
Yep, I can share my screen.
Okay, thank you. Well, in, in the meantime, why don't I just read the title of the resolution and then make a motion to adopt it? And then we can have a, have a discussion after that. Chair?
Um, so we have a motion to pass the resolution for member Fukamoto. Do we have a second from the board?
Second.
All right, Fukamoto makes the motion, and member Watson, seconds. So it's now on the table. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, well, thank you very much, Chair. What I would like to do is, and according to the pa, the past practices of this particular board, the practice is to read through the resolution so that members of the community who have not had an advanced copy of this know what's in the resolution.
Okay, so.
Well, I, I heard somebody, but in, in any case, what I'm going to do is read through the resolution. And then, while I'm doing it, I will explain what these paragraphs are. So I will give a commentary as well as read the resolution. So I, I will begin by reading the title of the resolution. Resolution concerning the draft general reevaluation report with integrated supplemental environmental impact statement for the Alawais Flood Risk Management Project. Now, the first two paragraphs, I'm sorry, the first two paragraphs are general introduction and history. Whereas the Alawais watershed is an area of Honolulu that is an Ahu Pu'a'a, from the mountains to the sea, in this case, from the Ko'ola Ridge Line to the ocean, from Kakaako to Diamond Head, and encompasses Makiki, Manoa, and Palolo Valleys. And whereas in the fall of twenty eighteen, Congress appropriated funds for the construction of the Alawais Flood Risk Management Project, be supervised by the United States Army Corps of Engineers. And so we're going to, uh, we're going to abbreviate the name of the project to the project, the name of the United States Army Corps of Engineers to the Army Corps. The next five paragraphs are a summary of the board's revolution, resolutions in the past. So paragraph three, whereas this board passed two resolutions concerning the project, the first in February twenty nineteen, asking that the project be put on hold, and the second in December of twenty twenty, requesting that the Army Corps seriously consider alternatives to its second version of the project. Whereas, since neither the first nor the second version of the project survived scrutiny, in November of twenty twenty-one, the Army Corps embarked on a process to develop a scaled-down project, one geared toward a twenty-five-year flood instead of a hundred-year flood. This third version being labeled the Alawais Flood Risk Management General Reevaluation Study, or GR. And whereas one measure found in several alternative plans was a detention basin on the grounds of Manoa Valley District Park. And whereas on February one, twenty twenty-three, this board unanimously passed a resolution opposing any flood control plan that required the construction of a detention basin at Manoa Valley District Park. And whereas subsequent those flood control plans have not included such a detention basin as one of their features. To summarize that, we had our latest resolution, which asked the Army Corps not to choose an alternative that would have a detention basin at Manoa Valley District Park. Uh, I don't know if they listened to us, whatever. Uh, in, in subsequent plans, they did not put in such a detention basin. And it's not in this tentatively selected plan or T, TSP. The next, the next paragraph is the trigger paragraph for this resolution. Whereas the Army Corps published its draft GR and supplemental environmental impact statement, which are going to abbreviate as SEIS, on November twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, triggering a forty-five-day comment period ending on January eighth, twenty twenty-four. That means we need to pass this resolution for uh, next week, Monday, in order to get it in within the deadline of the comment period. Next paragraphs, the next couple of paragraphs, several paragraphs, are a summary of the Army Corps' new tentative and selected plan. Whereas the Army Corps summarized the construction features of the tentatively selected plan thusly. One, Woodlawn Drive flood wall. Two, Koali Road flood wall. Three, Alawais Golf Course detention. And four, Alawais flood wall. And more detail about the function, the, the basic feature in Manoa Valley. Whereas the Woodlawn Drive flood wall averages six feet in height and extends from Manoa Stream just behind the Manoa Valley Veterinary Clinic in Manoa Marketplace, runs through Woodlawn Drive, and snakes around the left bank of Manoa. For about a quarter of a mile behind the University of Hawaii Horticulture, Horticultural Greenhouses. And whereas the flooding that occurs in the area of Lowry Avenue and Woodlawn Drive Bridges is caused by debris from albezia and other trees blocking the channels under these bridges. And now we get to the main feat, overall feature, which is the, um, the walls around the Alawais, whereas the flood walls along both sides of the Alawais Canal average six to nine feet in height. And the next paragraph is, is somewhat skeptical remarks about the data which establishes harm. Whereas the main purpose of the project is to protect Waikiki, the economic engine of the state, from quote-unquote riverine flooding, that is flooding caused by rainwater from the watershed. Yet of the three examples of the Alawais Canal overtopping from riverine flooding in nineteen sixty-seven, nineteen sixty-nine, and Hurricane Iniki nineteen ninety-two, only one matches up with the three significant flood events in nineteen sixty-seven, two thousand four, and two thousand six, identified by the Army Corps. All those dates of the major overtopping of the Alawais or the major flood events from Manoa Valley, those are provided by the Army Corps, but they don't really match up. So there's some question here about if we really need this to protect Waikiki. And the next two paragraphs deal with the cost. Whereas the estimated cost of the TSP is one-point-seven-five billion. And the cost of the local sponsor, the city and county of Honolulu, or the city, must cover would be three-hundred-seventy-six million. And whereas the cost, this cost figure does not include, due to uncertainty of the market, the cost of elevating structures or taking real estate, the additional estimates ranging from a hundred-twenty-five million to five-point-five billion. Those are the cost estimates that the Army Corps has presented, has presented themselves. And the next one, the next paragraph is information about, perhaps the major alternative to the, to the current plan. Whereas the permitted interaction group of the city council, consisting of council members Carol Fukunaga, Anne Kobayashi, and Tommy Waters, presented an alternative flood control plan in August twenty twenty, prepared by Oceanette, a local engineering firm, consisting of underground tunnels, swift tunnels... Consisting of underground tunnels, swift tunnels. Standing for subsurface watershed inundation flow technology. Which would convey excess groundwater from the upper watershed areas. Under the urban areas and into the ocean. The cost estimate of this plan as of January, I'm sorry, July 2020. According to Briarly and Associates would be 262 million for two tunnels. One in Manoa and another in Palolo. But this figure does exclude the cost of design and construction management. Property and easement acquisitions and environmental concerns. So the cost is at a minimum 262 million. And the cost would have to be reevaluated with these other concerns in mind. Therefore, and now this is the main. Action or be it resolved paragraph of the entire resolution. Be it resolved that the Manoa Neighborhood Board Number Seven. Declines to endorse the tentatively selected plan. And urges instead. That the Army Corps gives serious consideration. To the following alternatives, either standing alone or in combination. Swift tunnels in Manoa and Palolo Valleys. The Manoa Swift Tunnel Inlet being located just below the confluence. Of Manoa Stream and the Woodlawn Drainage Tunnel. This location is. On the border of the Manoa Gardens Development and. It's right where the Woodlawn Ditch Water enters Manoa Stream. It's above Kahaloa, the Kahaloa Street Bridge. Okay, and echo restoration and maintenance measures. Including albizia tree removal in the watershed area. Clearing Manoa Stream of trees and keeping channels under bridges free of silt accumulation. So further paragraphs. Be it further resolved that the Army Corps should ensure that the larger public impacted stakeholders. All those who were impacted by induced flooding, including residents. Condominium associations, recreational clubs and schools are properly informed. And added to the project's distribution list. Of the Army Corps' schedule of public engagements. And be it further resolved that the board also requests. That the army, I'm sorry, that the city and county of Honolulu defer entering. Into any partnership agreement with the Army Corps until all community concerns are sufficiently addressed. So we want the Army Corps to do a better job of engaging the community. And we also want them, we also want the city not to make any commitments. That they can't get out of. So before signing agreement with the Army Corps. Just take a while to take a pause. And the final paragraph is the transmittal paragraph. Be it finally resolved that copies of this resolution be transmitted to the Army Corps. To be included in the material for its environmental assessment. For the governor of the state of Hawaii, the mayor of the city and county of Honolulu. United States Senator Brian Schatz. U.S. Senator Mazie Hirono, U.S. Representative Ed Case. U.S. Representative Jill Dakota. All members of the Honolulu City Council, all members of Hawaii State Legislature. The Director of the State Department of Land and Natural Resources. The Director of the State Department of Budget and Finance. The Director of the State Office of Environmental Quality Control. The Director of the City Department of Design and Construction. And the Chairs of the Manoa. Kaka'ako, Makiki, Lower Punch Bowl, Tantalus, Manoa, Makali Mo'ili'i, Palolo, Kai'aki. And Waikiki Neighborhood Boards in the city and county of Honolulu. I'm sorry that was so long, but that is the resolution.
All right. Sure Zane's back.
Yes, sorry. Thank you, Dave, for your help with all of that. I do apologize for the technical issues I've been having tonight for some reason. So first off. Good job. I want to say that was a very well-written resolution. Thank you very much for preparing that for us, Elton. Just one question for context as well. Can you confirm if a similar resolution was also prepared by other neighborhood boards? And were they all approved by the neighborhood boards by those other areas?
Yes, I. They were. Can speak to this, but all of, I believe there are at least two resolutions which were very similar. I did see the earlier resolutions. I realized that we had to customize ours. We had to write our own because we had. Our individual concerns and our individual previous resolutions and Manoa Valley District Park and so forth and so on. So. So this resolution is. 90% original.
Yeah, so the only, only diameter, Kapahulu St. Louis Heights. Passed a resolution pertaining to the draft supplemental EIS. On December, I think 14th or 15th and tomorrow. Makali Mo'ili'i. I'm giving a presentation there and they're also gonna. Take action on a resolution. They're the only. Three neighborhood boards that basically were able to put it on the agenda in time. I do plan to go to all the others, including Waikiki. After the comment period. But if we can get it in before. It will be in the final EIS. So that's, it's important we, you know, we do it as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
Chair, can I make a motion that we put the resolution on the floor?
Motion, motion is valid? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second from Robert Fox. Motion is on the floor. There is a discussion period regarding the, regarding the motion as well as the resolution that has been brought in the motion. I'm gonna continue the discussion since I do see a hand raised by Dylan Armstrong as well. I do not see any hands raised by members of the board. Dylan, go ahead.
Much mahalo, Chair Zane, and I want to thank Members Watson and Fukamoto. Just a quick comment. If the board refers back to its April 6, 2022 minutes, it will note that the. OEQC mentioned in the final paragraph of this resolution is no longer. Office of Environmental Quality Control. It is the Environmental Review Program. At the Office of Sustainable Planning and Development. Sorry to nitpick, otherwise appreciate the thought that went into this and my comment is meant kindly. Mahalo.
Then maybe you can make that non-substantive correction. It's just a technical correction.
Elton?
Yeah, yeah, so. I would like to. Ask whether Anson should make these or should I? Make these technical amendments and then prepare a document and send it over to Anson.
Anson?
Chair, can I ask the Chair?
Oh. I'm of the opinion that you can make the amendment, since it's a germane amendment. That you could, that you could make the change and submit an updated one with the germane amendment to update for technical reasons. Anson, feel free to correct me on this as well. You'll be the one receiving it.
Hi, everybody. Dylan Buck here, also with the Neighborhood Commission Office. Yes, so you can make any amendments to the resolution that's on the floor. And whatever your final copy is that has been approved by this board with a quorum vote. Should be sent to our office and we'll do the posting and help with distribution. So ultimately, it's up to your board to decide what version you'd like. You can. Make little details edits or large ones. So just let us know if you'd like to make an amendment. Because that will need a motion with a second as well.
Okay, even if it's, Anson and Dylan, does it have to have a motion even if it's a technical or germane change just to make technical changes to the document?
If there's no objections to it, you know, it's fine. But if anyone does object, obviously that changes the document and that would require a motion. I see a little bit of head nodding, but.
No, thank you for clarifying.
Just to be clear, changes, changes to the document should be agreed on by the full board. I hope that makes sense.
That makes sense, absolutely. Thank you.
So. So, so former Chair Armstrong, could you just give me the name of the new, the new name of the office?
If I'm allowed to speak, certainly. Thank you. The new program name is Environmental Review Program. And that is within the reorganized. Office of Sustainable Planning and Development, which is actually in a different. Department than it was previously, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay, so it's the Environmental Review Program of the Office of Sustainable Development?
Planning and Development, OPSD. We, the board formerly had Tom Eisen come to talk about the Environmental Review Program with regards to Manoa Banyan Court, but that was in April 2022.
Okay, and that replaces the name of the State Office of Environmental Quality Control.
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you, Chair, former Chair.
Thank you for that. So. So in which case, we have the motion on the floor right now for the previous amendment. I'm gonna table that. And just go, quickly go for. If anybody, for a motion for unanimous consent for the, for the updated. Resolution in case anybody else had any other comments on this thing.
Well, well, Chair, just one really.
The updated name. Need a second?
Hold on, Elton? You had a comment more quickly.
Yeah, so, so there's, there's one technical difficulty. I mentioned in the Manoa. Board, it should be St. Louis, Kapahulu, Diamond Head. So, so I would substitute Manoa, which is our board. And put in St. Louis, Kapahulu, Diamond Head. That's who, we would send a copy of our resolution to that other neighborhood board.
Hmm, and that's mentioned inside of the resolution as well.
That's part of the transmittal only.
Okay.
Transmittal paragraph.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. Yeah, we'll just include that as. As part of the technical changes. So. Motion to approve both technical changes regarding. The name of, the updated name of the, of the state office as well as who is going to receive this resolution.
And it needs a second. Who's gonna second?
I second.
Second by Member Bosel. Are there any objections? Robert, lower your hand just so that way we can confirm that just. Yep. I, oh, Anson, you have your hand raised?
I, yes, I did just want to clarify. I see that we have, I believe, eight members with their cameras on. We do have enough members for quorum. But as we are training here with Anson, we do need a quorum number of cameras on. This is just a legal requirement. So the rest of the board members, if you just turn it on for the time being, and that'll solve this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Bosel, oh, for the record. Member Fukamoto has had, does not have, has issues with turning on his camera. For this meeting, for any meetings, actually. So I just wanted to know. That that's probably the best you're gonna have from Elton regarding the camera. So.
I can.
Call the vote.
You know, at this time, Anson, you're good? Do we have, are there any objections? Hearing and seeing none, the amendments have been confirmed. Moving on to motion to approve the amended resolution. Do I have a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by Member. Second by Member Nagaji. All those in favor, say aye.
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 None opposed, motion carried, resolution is adopted with unanimous consent. So, good job, everybody. The resolution is approved. We got that one handled. Moving on now, it is, wow, we have, we have really sat through that pretty fast. So thank you for that. Born Business. Filling of vacancies. We have two vacancies in Sub District 3 and five vacancies in Sub District 4. In hindsight, this would have come earlier before the unfortunate resolution vote, but. Does anybody on, inside of the neighborhood board chat over here have worked on the neighborhood board? Hearing, seeing none listed here. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Are there any updates from the primary urban center development plan or updates regarding the Manoa Banyan Court?
No.
No to both items on the agenda.
No, as far as, yeah.
Thank you very much. And moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is community concerns. One issue that has, that was put back on the agenda from the previous meetings was whether or not to move in person or hybrid. Do we have any updates from anybody regarding those? Ellen?
Yes, I was tasked with checking with Manoa Elementary School. And Manoa Elementary School does not have connectivity in their cafeteria. And they also will not host a regularly scheduled meeting. So they wouldn't be able to accommodate us the first Wednesday of every month, so they're out. So then Dave Nagaji was gonna check out a couple and see what he found. So Manoa Elementary School's out.
All right, so. I'm sorry. I have three places to report on. One is the Manoa Valley Theater. This is on behalf of Helen Nikano. She checked it out about a month, month and a half ago. Manoa Valley Theater is out unfortunately because they can't guarantee that they'll be able to host us the first Wednesday of every month. One of the ones that I checked out was the, was using some of the facilities at Manoa District Park. There's some availability, but in practical terms, it's a no. The biggest issue is that they don't have Wi-Fi at the Manoa District Park facilities. And currently, because their biggest meeting room is under renovations for six months or longer. The biggest room that they could give us would fit max three, they said, 40 people comfortably would be the max. And there'd also be some time restrictions, so we would have to start later at 7:45 and we have to be out of there by 9:30. But again, that's kind of secondary to the issue that they don't have Wi-Fi, so I don't think it's viable. The one that I do think could be viable is Manoa Innovation Center. The committees that we had during last officer term used Manoa Innovation Center on a few occasions and worked pretty well. So in terms of availability, Manoa Innovation Center can do 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM, so our current time. And they have availability as long as we give them a month's notice. The one downside, and they also have Wi-Fi. But the one downside is that they do have a 40-person room that used to be available for meetings. But it's apparently been leased by someone else. So the biggest. Room that we can get from Manoa Innovation Center, they said would seat 20 people. They said it was the boardroom. The cost for that would be. About $20 per hour, but it's possible for us to get UH to waive that so that we can use it for free like we did with the committees. And yeah, the procedure for it would just be to call in advance and email UH for a waiver. So we have one viable option there. The question is, is a room that seats only 20 people big enough for us? And, yeah.
Thank you for the updates on that. Ellen?
What happened, Dave? What happened to the presentation room? It's no longer available?
It said that the presentation room at Innovation Center has now been leased by someone else.
All the time, 100% every day?
I think so. I mean, they said it's no longer available for us, so apparently someone else has it and we can't use it.
Wow, that's too bad.
Thank you for those updates. Do we have any thoughts? And I'm also open to motions on what or not. Do you want to vote on? I guess moving our meetings to hybrid or to. Move forward this as this is on the agenda. Patty, you have your hand raised?
Yes, thank you, Chair.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I know we talked about having UH provide a place and I forgot why we can't do that. I mean, they are part of our, a biggest part of our neighbors, neighborhoods. So why can't they come up with a room? I mean, I'm sure they have lots of lecture room. They have night classes and the business college and I'm sure they have the technology there. They, they must have Wi-Fi. I mean, did we try to ask them or what's the reason why we can't use them? Because I, I think that might be the only option. There are lots of parking. Maybe they can waive the fee for parking in the room. We talked to Alma. I mean, I know he's not here tonight.
Hmm, Ellen?
Thank you. We considered UH, but the problem is parking. Everybody who attends will have to pay for parking and they have lots and lots of events there and other high school events there and lots going on. And so the traffic problems could be a nightmare. The congestion is a nightmare. And I don't think it's fair to ask people to attend a neighborhood board meeting and they have to pay for it and a hundred run for parking. So I say it's a no-go for sure.
But did we ever ask them to not charge us parking as a good neighbor? I mean, they, um, they said no.
And so who knows if the same room or certainly the same parking won't be available all the time. And that's just how it is. I mean, they're willing to host it, but not for free.
They have lots of meeting room. I can't imagine they have events all the time. I'm not talking about lower campus. I'm talking about like hall. I mean, I, I graduated there a long time ago. So there's classroom in the business college that would accommodate at least forty, fifty people in the classroom setting. I, I don't know. I'm just wondering if we should talk to Alma or someone else on like, I don't know, president as somebody to help us out. I mean, they are part of our neighbors, right? They're a big part of our group. That was just my thought. I don't know.
No, 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 no. I, I, I see your point, Patty. I think the issue that Ellen raised though was, I think the major stickler point was the parking concerns and the inability, I, the ability or inability to get a waiver for parking fees and try and how the UH would differentiate who is coming on to the campus for the neighborhood boarding meeting and who would just try to like sneak onboard. That, I mean, they, they do charge parking no matter where you park on the campus. That's the fact of life for UH. We could try, I could follow up with the, maybe the Atherton project since that's just open up. I don't know what the parking situation is over there. And, but we can try to follow up on that. That's a, that's a good thought as well, instead of just saying out loud. Robert?
That may seem like our best option, you know, in terms of space and central to everywhere. And if we can get them to not charge us parking, because I know there's a parking lot used to be by the business college and they can just let us park there one night.
That business college parking lot is gated as well. You gotta pass to park over there.
Right, but can they open that, that parking lot just for like one Wednesday night for three hours? Well, we can maybe talk to Alma about this when he comes back next month. I don't know.
We, we can bring it up at least. It doesn't hurt to ask.
Okay. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thanks, Patty. Robert, your hands raised?
I'm gonna suggest my neighbor, the Mormon Institute is right next door to my house. They're very good friends of mine. I've held many a fundraiser here for the History of Hawaii Foundation, the Eolani Palace, Gamma Mu, lots of different things. They have a parking lot that has thirty-five parking spaces and they always give it to me for free. They're very, very nice people. They have huge meeting rooms inside. I have no problem going next door and asking them if they would be willing to host the Manoa Neighborhood Board. They do not have anything on a Wednesday evening going on, so far as I know. I will double check with the association, but if that's something that you would like me to do, I'll be glad to go next door and talk with them tomorrow.
Feel free to get, we'd appreciate that, Robert. Feel free to go ahead and get information about it, their ability to have Wi-Fi in particular, since, oh, they do have Wi-Fi. That's good.
It's the student, what do they call it? It's like the Student Institute for the University of Hawaii. So yeah, they have full Wi-Fi capability there.
Okay. Yeah, you can follow, follow up on that. We'd appreciate that.
Will do, Robert. Thank you.
Thanks. Dave?
Thanks, Chair. I just wanted to bring up a couple suggestions that I've been getting messages on. One is from Kei Shi, which is the possibility of using the cafeteria at University Lab School. Another one I got was to potentially use the RISE building at UH or the Honolulu Japanese Seventh Day Adventist Church. So I, I haven't talked to those people yet, so I'm not sure what the availability is, but are those possibilities that we should consider and that I should follow up with?
Sure. The more options, the better. Feel free to do so.
Right. In that case, I guess we put the same item on the agenda for next month and come back and compare notes again?
Good. Before that, though, I believe Bev Smith had her hands, has her hand raised. Bev, you're muted still. Bev, you're muted.
Sorry. I noticed that Doyle Street has free parking all the time.
Oh, the one that's between Atherton and UH Labs?
The, that and, and by that PBS building, you know, that's no longer used. All of that Doyle Street is free. Yeah. Just a thought.
Good to keep, yeah, good to keep in mind. Thank you for that, Bev. Appreciate that. Does anybody, okay, so we're gonna keep looking at a couple more venues based on the discussion tonight. At the same time, does anybody in the, we're gonna move on from this topic unless anybody wants to put up a vote on this issue. Hearing and seeing none, though. We'll be moving on. If anybody in the community who is still with us at eight fifty-eight PM would like to talk about any issues concerning them regarding the community, please feel free to raise your hands and make your voice heard at this time. Oh, Laura?
Yeah, very quickly, your comments, your testimony is very much solicited to the, what Dave Wataasi was bringing up, the Alawai, the Army Corps of Engineers proposal and your particular comments and testimony. And they, it has to be due before the eighth of this month. There's also another commentary period that's coming up very soon to, for the bridge, suggested bridge over the Alawai Canal, which I oppose. And it would be very important if you also have commentary on that, to please submit it as quickly as possible to City and County DTS. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Uh, let's see, Kei Shi.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I'm really concerned about the Pahoa Ridge development that is coming up in the lower Manoa area. And we were wondering if we could get a meeting with our council member, since it will be possibly up for a vote for approval with the city council, possibly in January.
Members say we're speaking about the potential for a meeting regarding that particular issue. Patty, if, can you coordinate with Kei Shi since you're the one who's leading the charge on that particular issue?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Yeah, so.
Thanks.
Okay, work with Patty on that. She's the best person on the board over here who's working on that Pahoa Ridge issue.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I may add, I'm hoping Dave can help us too, Dave Wataasi, if he's still here.
I will.
Great, thanks.
Any else have any comments or issues they want to raise? I am not hearing anything else at this time, nor am I seeing anybody for additional comments. In which case, ladies and gentlemen, we're moving on to the announcement section on the agenda. Our next regular board meeting will be held on Wednesday, February seventh at twenty, twenty twenty-four, I guess, the rate twenty twenty-four, everybody, via WebX online platform and Kapalama Hale Conference Room one five-three. And the agenda will also include again the Manoa Neighborhood Board meeting locations to be discussed and possibly changed to a different location. And the next announcement, O'Leary broadcast on the second and fourth Saturdays of the month at three o'clock PM or every third Tuesday at nine o'clock PM or online at oleary.org/tv schedule. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned and it's nine oh one PM. We have finished a whole hour early. A great job on the resolution. Great. Thank you, Dave, for your presentation tonight. We really appreciate your input on this important issue affecting all of us over here. Ladies and gentlemen, we will adjourn for the night. Thank you so much again. Looking forward to seeing everybody in February.